Good evening. It is January 22nd. It is 6:00 PM. Will you please rise to say the Pledge of Allegiance with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We'll begin with roll call. Councilwoman Loy?
Here.
Councilwoman Kestie?
Present.
Councilwoman Diamond?
Present.
Councilwoman Henderson?
Here.
Councilwoman Cox?
Here.
Councilwoman Burns?
Present.
And Councilwoman Lavaca?
Here.
Okay, moving on to approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilwoman Henderson and second by Councilwoman Diamond. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Okay, this will be for items one through seven. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilwoman Burns, second by Councilwoman Lavaca. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. There we go. No special guest tonight or presentation. Moving on to city administrative report and talking about House Bill 1299, the residential parking standards.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson, Council. I'm going to turn it over pretty quickly here to Tom Glover, our Community Development Director, but we do have a proposed bill at the legislature we wanted to make you aware of and see if the council wants to weigh in on this bill. Tom?
All right, great. Thank you, Charlie. So this was brought to my attention by Chief last week that the legislature is entertaining a new House bill, House Bill 1299, and there's also a companion bill in the Senate, 5184. And I'll put these in my weekly update for you this week so you can find those numbers. Anyway, this concerns a proposal for new parking standards that essentially cut in half what our standards are now. It caught me by surprise. I'm surprised that this hasn't come down through APA, the Planning Association, or any other directors in the area. I don't know how much they know about it. When I went online, it's not under local government, or not under the Growth Management Act list of bills. It's off separately by itself. So anyway, my concern is that with the work that we've been doing, what we've tried to do in our work on revising the parking standards with our planning commission is to find that sweet spot between current state requirements and what Cedar Woolley needs and wants to have. That's taken a lot of work, a lot of research, a lot of discussion with planning commission. We're still working through that. As I mentioned, we're about three quarters of the way done through that. We've got a public hearing set for our February planning commission meeting on this. So we're almost there, and then suddenly this pops up. So I don't know why it's popping up, and I couldn't see really any kind of narrative as to history. There's just the bill sponsors for each of these bills. Anyway, I'm concerned about it, and I've talked to Charlie and some of the others and staff, and we are concerned about it. I asked Ashton to reach out to our APA organization, and there's been no response from them. So I'm not even really sure if it's got the attention of our planning directors in our state or anybody else. I don't know how it is that, I think it was under police stuff that you heard about it.
Waspic does is they legislative session, they just kind of pick whatever new bills come out the day that's anywhere kind of near to related to police involvement. This one's not really. It's parking, so that probably hit a keynote. But I looked at it, and I was like, well, Tom might want to know about this. That's kind of how I got into that.
Yeah. So just to touch on a couple of things, I don't know if you had a chance to look at this, but what they're proposing is that a code city, we are code city, may not require more than one parking space per residential unit, dwelling unit, including single-family homes. Code city may not require more than one parking space per 1,000 square feet of commercial space. It may not have minimum parking requirements for existing buildings undergoing change of use, including vacant buildings, residences under 1,200 square feet. As you know, we're looking at our cottage housing code. Commercial spaces under 5,000 square feet, affordable housing, senior housing, housing for people with disabilities, facilities to serve alcohol, childcare facilities, commercial spaces, and mixed-use projects. And then, yeah, and then there's some definitions of that. So, and that's, both bills are more or less identical. It's kind of frustrating in their effort to help us. I think, I think it's, you know, just my perspective and being somebody who's worked in the state for a long time under the planning stuff, what we always try to do is meet the intent of the GMA and the code requirements, of course, but also find that regulation that is reflective of the local community. So I could see where this could be maybe something that a larger city, Seattle, Tacoma, may be wanting to entertain. I've heard there's developments in Bellingham and Spokane, but those are really big cities compared to us. And it just seems like overkill.
A little bit more on this. It was assigned to House Local Government Committee in the House. It's got a companion bill in the Senate, 5184, which has also been assigned to committee. Not sure which one. Just looking at it real quick here. But yeah, they're, they're both, at least the first one, the House bill, like nine sponsors. So it's, it's got some significant support. So we wanted to bring it to your attention, and there are, you know, a number of things we could do as a city. We could plan to sign in an opposition. We could send a letter with, you know, council's signature and the mayor's signature just to the motion of the council. We could do that, send a letter in opposition. Those are the main things. But we've got folks going to the City Action Days under the mayor, and Councilmember Burns will be down there as well, and they can certainly carry the message from council if you have concerns. Or if you support it, let us know that too, of course, but we definitely don't suspect that you would support it.
There's, the first hearing on these, there's the 5184, the Senate one. They're having a public hearing on Friday at 10:30, and there's a way to, for us to tune in. And so my intent is to tune in with my planning staff and see how that goes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I would like to see us put in a letter opposing both House Bill 1299 and Senate Bill 5184. And if we could do that quickly, it would be good because we could submit it before that hearing. Because if I remember correctly, you can submit in writing. You don't just have to show up and give public testimony. I mean, it'd be fantastic if one of us could, but...
There is possibility of also, oftentimes they allow public testimony via Zoom as well. So that may be an option as well.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to second that motion and also to say I'm strongly opposed to this concept. And what you're saying, Tom, you know, it's, it seems to be somehow, some way, maybe a bit misguided attempt to deal with affordable housing. And while the Bellingham Herald had a story about it, and the city of Bellingham, I think, is looking at it, but they're a lot bigger city than we are, and Seattle is huge, but it's, you know, it's that one-size-fits-all approach. It doesn't work for us, so I am strongly opposed. I don't see why they can't make exceptions for smaller towns and let us do what we know best we can do instead of, you know, being over us like this. Thank you.
Peyton with one brush. Go ahead, Councilman Lavaca.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. So I think I just heard something about like a rent lock or something like that coming down the pike as well. Is that something that we would be writing a letter about as well to say, you know, allow our, allow smaller communities to handle their own situations, our own code? Or is that, I know we don't deal with the rent caps or nothing, but it seems like if, it seems like there is some stretching out over all communities where it's not really how the Washington State Constitution was set up, the way I interpret it. It's the communities that have, you know, cities and counties have the rule within their areas. And we've kind of, we've lost that through the purse strings. So if this did pass, we'd have to do it or we wouldn't get money, I think, is what it boils down to. We won't go to jail or anything. So, yeah, I think it'd be good to maybe add something like that in there, too.
Yeah, there is at least one bill on rent control. I suspect there are multiples. I haven't looked into it in detail, but we can certainly take a look at those as well. And if council feels that way on those bills as well, we could, we'd probably be best to send a separate letter to address those.
That was going to be my comment, is separate letters so that it is going to the correct committees with correct information when you're doing that.
Okay, Councilman Loy?
Yeah, Tom, I just got a question. The way I read it, it says it's not a one-size-fits-all, and you have to go case by case to decide what the parking rules are going to be wrong, be like. Now, did I read that right? And if I did, if you go case by case, everybody's going to be bitching that the last guy got a better deal than him.
Yeah, yes, yeah, right.
So did I read that correctly?
Well, I'd have to look at that more carefully, but I think the way I read this is that it's, for all cities have to, have to adhere to this, the criteria I read off. And so in terms of case by case, I'm not quite sure I understand what they would mean by that. I hope that's not the case, because you're right.
They said it's not a one-size-fits-all.
Councilman Henderson, do you want?
Yeah, Mayor, Kevin, so yeah, that, Mr. Glover, that's under Section 1 of 1299, towards the end of the paragraph. It says, "The legislature further finds the amount of parking that a project actually needs should be determined on a case-by-case basis by permit applicants sensitive to actual market conditions rather than one-size."
Oh, right, I see, yeah. That's, that's going to create a problem, too, for the reason you just said. Yeah, right. I'm sorry? Yeah, right, yeah, yeah.
Go ahead, Councilman Henderson.
Thanks. And Kevin, thanks. That kind of brings me into the next section of, Section 3 for code cities. So the Section 1, saying that essentially we need to, parking should be determined on a case-by-case basis. And then you go down to Section 3 for code city, which is us. And then it says, "May not require," not, "should not," but it's "may not." So that means, in legalese, means cannot, right?
Yeah, yeah, typically the language would be "shall not," which is really strong. I always see what you're saying here. Yeah, "shall not require more than," yeah, right. Or, excuse me, "may not require." Yeah, you're right.
So is "may not," "shall not"?
I would interpret it that way.
So the maximum, the most strict policy that we could impose is one parking spot per residential unit?
Yes.
Okay. And then I see it goes down here to say, "undergoing change of use, including vacant buildings," and then residences, blah, 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 blah. And it gets all the way here to "housing for people with disabilities." So the state doesn't find it necessary to provide ADA spaces for housing for people with disabilities. Now, and I, I'm talking to them, but I'm, we're in this meeting, but I'm kind of trying to see the logic in any of this bill. And I, and I hope as we draft a letter, we can drive, you know, some of the points that the rest of council is bringing up also because I don't know how this, how even half of this bill even comes close to hitting all the, hitting all the legal requirements for the American with Disabilities Act of 1972, right, '72? Yeah, yeah. Okay, so that's just kind of where I was at on that. I think this bill's an absolute dumpster fire, so hopefully it doesn't even see the floor. But we need to be ready to, to, to deal with it on our end. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm in support of the opposition letter as well. If this were to pass and we then have developments based on parking with one spot per unit, you're going to have so much overflow parking that you have no space for our first responders to respond to any sort of issue. So along with the ADA regulations not currently being followed or making any logical sense to support and take care of those people in our community, we also limit the ability for our first responders to come in and actually service the community should there be some sort of fire accident or, or anything else, and we need to also make that a point.
Very good. Thank you.
Councilmember Diamond, beat me to the punch. I was just going to address the public safety of that, looking at some of the roads we have where there's not parking space available on both sides. You can't get a fire truck down it, so this would just exacerbate that problem substantially.
And I think, Councilman Lavaca, did you?
Madam Mayor, so on the, it is, the reason why we're taking or they're taking such, you know, crazy efforts to move this forward and to see things is affordable housing. And so other, other things they're going to be doing are going to be just as surprising. That rent cap, that's, that's surprising to see, you know, other ADUs being placed everywhere. That's surprising. So I think we probably should encompass, because those committees are still going to read that letter a lot more intently than entire, entire, the Senate or entire House. And right now it's just in the House. So it would be nice to kind of encompass some of that. Hey, we can manage our own communities, and we should have the ability to do that.
Councilman Henderson?
Councilwoman Diamond brought up a good point about the fire, the fire trucks and all that other stuff, first responders. And so in the future, I guess this is a question for you, Mr. Glover, and both you, Mr. Bullock, about any future planned residential communities that we have. Are we just going to tell the developer, hey, the road you got to build in there, you have to build it big enough to where, you know, people are going to park on the street, and we have to have per whatever the fire code is, X amount of feet between the two? So now you're going to have to build an even bigger roadway than you did initially because we're, you know, we're getting bills like this thrown at us. And so we have to, we have to turn around and protect the people that are going to be living in those houses, right? We have to, we have to provide them with, with, with safety. So how, how would we go about requiring that?
Actually, I don't know what, I can't remember what section is in the, in the proposed bill, but it precludes, I believe it's precluding cities from doing on-street parking to make up for the lack of parking in front of the houses as well. So I believe, because this has gone around kind of the Transportation Planning Committee a little bit, the theory that you limit or eliminate parking, therefore people won't own the cars because they can't park them there, and you reduce congestion. That's what I read into this as the impetus for this bill.
Right.
Which is a very narrow set of assumptions that, you know, people will,
It's part of the GMA plan.
overflow parking, even though they have a four-bedroom house with eight people, and eight people own cars. So if you start limiting parking like this as a attempt to mitigate congestion, you end up with a bunch of unintended consequences.
Cars on the grass.
That's right.
Yeah, and really the assumption there is that there's adequate transit available for people to use for transportation, which certainly does not apply outside of the very urban areas of the state. So we can, we can make that point as well.
So I know that like a lot of the House bills that come down will, will state very clearly that cities that plan through the GMA must, and then, you know, like House Bill 1337, right, the, the, the ADU bill, right, the two per, per lot, right? But I don't see that on here. So this is just, everybody, whether you plan for GMA or not, this is just a one-size-fits-all, and here we go, right? Nothing about...
Well, the GMA, the way that it works, it used to be bottom-up. So we would meet and we would decide what it is for our community, what were our needs, industrial zones, CBD, all of that, where we were going to put, you know, RR7s. And a couple of years ago, the legislators decided that in their wisdom, they knew, they were smarter than us. And they were going to tell us what we needed for our community, and this is part of the GMA plan. It is to get rid of people using their vehicles. They want cities to be walkable cities. They also want to see a lot of transit happen. But as we all know, and has been pointed out tonight, there just isn't any transit that happens here within our small little town. And think of all those other towns just east of us. What are they going to do?
I can't take a bus to go to Seattle to get kidney dialysis three times a week. It's just not possible. You know, so it, none of, this is, this is terrible.
Yeah, it is. It is. I agree. It's dictating what we can and cannot do. So there was a motion made by, I believe, Councilwoman Burns, second by Councilwoman Cox, to write a letter. And I think the council has given some really good points that can be stated. So is all the council in favor? So say aye.
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 Is there anybody opposed? Okay, so that's what we'll do then. And yes, go ahead.
Just have one other brief item if the council's ready to move on. And I'm going to turn it over here to Public Works Director Bullock. You got an email from a school district representative regarding Cook Road and our crossing and speed limits and some other stuff, and so we just wanted to give a brief update on that.
So, and I've talked to the school district today, too, to explain where Public Works' position is on it. So at this location of, I'm going to call it the southern trail, the portion of the trail road south of, of Cook Road, you know, we have a new gas station in Mini Mart. We've had a couple of citizen requests as well. And so part of that, so Public Works took a look at it, and in our analysis, we determined that that is an appropriate place to put a lighted push-button pedestrian crossing with Cross Rock and Refuge Island, similar to what you see at Janicki Field. And that's actually a good midpoint between Janicki Field Crossing and the roundabout, about 1,000 feet spacing, which is about the spacing you actually want on an arterial like Cook Road. And so that's going to be, and that's already been put into our plans for our street improvement program of, you know, where we do with the overlays, just like we did last year in some ADA improvements. So we have some capacity in that program with our TIB grant to actually put that in this summer. So that's something we're just simply going to do. And coordinated that feeling back with the school district. The other thing they were wondering about is whether or not it'd be possible to lower the speed limit on Cook Road and explained what the issues are with that. So Cook Road, signing it, for instance, down to 25 miles an hour for just a space in that, there's various reasons why that isn't compliant with the MUTCD and different things. Also, changing the habits of an entire traffic stream is extremely difficult without an extreme level of enforcement. So with this as a first step, with a new, I'll just call it advanced pedestrian crossing, because we do have the new Mini Mart there, and we have the whole community on the north side of the road. That's a trip generator and trip destination. As Beatty Square and those areas start to develop, that's going to create an additional level of pedestrian traffic. So this is an appropriate place for a crossing like that, dedicated to that. And so basically, talking through them, we kind of came from understanding that that's a good first step. If we have some additional issues, oh, letting it sit for another year or two just to figure out what the new normal would be. You know, we could add, there's some other tools we can add to that to maybe increase driver awareness, like rumble strips or something like that, that kind of redirect people's attention as they approach something like that. So that's how we're going to step into it. We actually already started implementing it before, is it Mr. Martin?
No, it was Tony.
I can't remember the gentleman.
Tony Smith.
And so basically, we've coordinated that with the school district and, and let them know kind of what actions we're already taking. They seem to be rather pleased with it. And so that's kind of a short report on our coordination that we had today. Any questions?
I just had an observation. I commuted from Bellingham to Cedar Woolley for 18 years. And boy, when you, you go from 50 and then you hit 35, I don't know how many times I was nearly rear-ended because people are just following you two inches, you know, they're, they're on your bumper. I don't want that lowered. I don't know that that would, I think that'd make it even worse. However, I do, am a little concerned about the RV park. There's quite a few people in there, and I don't think it would be, I mean, it's kind of a what you do or don't do. But I do think the lighted passageway would be a really good thing if people will actually observe it. My wife and I were walking our dog on Magar, across Fruitdale at Magargyle, and there's a lighted thing. We pushed the button, and as we stepped into the crosswalk, this is just the other day, a truck 50 miles an hour just came flying by five feet from us. Didn't even see it, lighted and everything. So a little bit of education to people not to drive fast is also another thing that we should do.
Okay. Councilman Henderson?
Yes, thank you. So I was having a little trouble from the email figuring out exactly where they were asking. So they're asking for it to go from the south side of Cook Road across the street to the Good Beginnings Campus.
So in the vicinity, so if you, if you have your map in front of you.
Yep.
Okay, so you look at the, I'll call it south trail road, for lack of a better term. So the trail road just south of Cook Road, this will get put in about 40 feet to the west of that. So that way I'm not, that way this crossing doesn't interfere with turning movements off a trail road onto Cook. It doesn't also, more importantly, interfere with any of the school bus routes that come between the school and trail road and that piece.
So a little closer to Klinger.
Yeah, yeah, well, like I said, it's not going to be coincidence with the corner. It's going to be overlooked. We have that capability with the MUTCD, right? And so as our folks have looked at it, Nathan, Kyle, myself, that's, we've optimized what location it's going to be in. It's going to be about 40 feet off of the corner so that we provide access to those turning movements and stuff without, we don't want them running over our brand-new flashing lights, right? And, but at the same time, it's still plenty close enough and in the pedestrian travel path, if you will, going from that community to the grocery store, that we're not going to have people cutting a corner and jaywalking just 60 feet down from the crosswalk, right? So it seems to be a logical, optimal place to put it and with minimal interference to the existing traffic movements.
Well, the other ones around town are working. Though the only reason that they wouldn't work is that people weren't actually pressing the button. And I, I see kids cut across the road sometimes, you know? I'm not going to name names, but, yeah, I like that because then that, that's a little closer to the more heavily populated area of Klinger where a lot of that pedestrian traffic, it's, they're not all just going to be walking to the preschool. Their people are going to, and then have you thought about the zigzag lines? They get smaller and smaller as you get to the crosswalk. You've seen those, right?
Nope.
No?
They have them in concrete.
Yeah, yeah, they have them in concrete. So basically, it's, you're, you're driving along, and it's like a zigzag, and then it gets tighter and tighter.
And it gives you an optical illusion?
Yeah, to, to slow down. I like the one in concrete. I think it's kind of cool. It might be an idea.
I've never necessarily seen one in action before, but I've, I've heard about the optical illusion thing.
Councilman Burns?
I was actually going to inquire about something maybe relatively close to that, whether lights across the road that are embedded, or anything that might draw people's attention to it, because that is a very busy road with a lot going on, close to that intersection.
So, early on, when they first came out, I was rather impressed with the in-pavement lighting signal. Throughout the years, and, and part of this comes from the traffic, Washington State Traffic Safety Commission, is they stopped funding those, because apparently there's a, they're not as effective as I guess people would perceive them to be. And I personally think they're really visible, but I don't know. I, I just, my transportation professional colleagues have, and, and like the funding agencies, TIB, Traffic Safety Commission, Safe For Out To Schools, does not fund them, for instance, and that type of thing. For so, so for some reason, there's a piece where they're not as effective as, as people hoped they would be when they first came out in about, what, two thousand and five, sometime around there is what I'm recalling. So, yeah, that's not something that I've necessarily thought about in several years as, as a solution to implement, just because it's not really an accepted solution anymore.
I see.
But, but that's where like the rumble grooves and the, and the rumble buttons can come in, if that's, they are kind of loud. People who live next door is going to, you know, live next to the road in that location is going to hear every darn car, car go by. But, you know, when I was in Mason County, one of our solutions was to put rumble grooves in front of every stop sign, because we were having a large incidence of people running stop signs and getting in collisions. And we reduced the stop sign-related collisions in the entire county by over fifty percent. And that's mainly because you get a tactile and an audio feel when you run over them. You put them about two hundred and fifty to three hundred feet away, so your stop site, stopping site distance away from the stop sign. And they're usually rather effective. And I use rumble grooves instead of rumble buttons often, because they don't get torn up by snowplows. But, but those are all tools in our toolbox. I like to use them judiciously, because if you have rumble grooves everywhere in town, then nobody pays attention to them again.
Okay.
It's something we'll evaluate. And if it's the appropriate use of that tool, we'll certainly consider it.
All right. I appreciate that you'll keep an eye on it. And that's, I just want to make sure that the kids are safe when they're crossing the road, whether it be near an elementary school or a park. I think those are important spots, so thank you.
Councilman Lavaca?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Something that Councilman Cox said was the Gargyle. And a lot of the places around our neighborhoods that have those push-button lights are very effective, like Councilman Henderson said. But that one on Gargyle isn't, and nearly is effective. And so you can push it, and cars will just keep going by. Finally, you'll stop, they'll, they'll start to stop, and then you'll be able to go. And the concern is that, a lot of them are trucks, actually, and also traffic. So would we be able to get like a warning light? That way you push the button, and, and fifty feet ahead is also another warning light, or if flashing, prepare to stop, a warning sign or something. That way you just don't come right up on it.
Those things, okay, good. Those types of things are always possible. They're all tools to get, I mean, one of the things that all of these things depend on is, is voluntary compliance, right? If you're not getting that voluntary compliance, then all of a sudden the tool's not effective. And there's different ways, rumble grooves, advanced lighting is, we, certainly we have advanced signage. When you're coming up on a crosswalk sign, you have an advanced crosswalk sign that we usually put in at about a hundred feet. And so, again, those are types of things, I like to step into those tools. You can always put something like an advanced lighting thing is not necessarily a bad idea, as long as people want to comply with it. So, very good suggestion.
Councilman Cock?
Yeah, I just want to follow up. Thank you, Councilman Lavaca. That is a kind of a dicey intersection there, because so many people are crossing the street there to go walk their dogs, or to walk or bike in the northern state recreation area. And then as we go farther up Fruitdale, once the park is in, then you've got all those people coming across the street from those neighborhoods. So I like the idea of an advance, you know, let people know something's coming up, because it is being largely, well, not entire, I mean, it's like one out of fifty. I mean, this person who went by us was a kid, in a, in a big truck. He probably just didn't see the light until the last second, being charitable. But, you know, I think, I just don't want some kid or some person to get hit there. I don't think it's, it's being as widely observed as it should be. Thank you.
The other thing a rumble groove or rumble strip does, it also alerts the pedestrian that there's somebody coming in an audio fashion, you know, in auditory fashion, as opposed to, especially now with electric vehicles, because I don't know if you, I, parking lots scare the heck out of me now with hybrid and electric vehicles, because you can't hear those things, right? And we depend, as pedestrians, we depend a lot on our audio cues as we do visual cues. So that's another advantage of rumble strips and rumble grooves. But then again, you also got to consider how close the residents are, because they'll listen to cars go by forever after that.
Okay, thank you. If there's nothing else, we'll move on to Councilman Lloyd?
I have nothing this week, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Kestie?
Thank you. I just wanted to invite everybody at seven o'clock tonight at the Cedar Woolley High School is the unified basketball. And so if we should get done early, it would be nice to have everyone's support.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Diamond?
Good evening. The, only two things tonight. I actually had somebody talk to me about the oversized trucks parked on Ferry Street. They're, obviously, they're frequenting businesses. We want to see that. But when our parking was designed, it was never designed for big oversized trucks that come into the roadway. And so vehicles are having to go around and into the opposite lane, hoping that no vehicle is coming. So I told the individual that I would make sure that I shared that as a concern. I'm sure we all are very much aware of that. And that is, is a frequent thing that we see on, on the corner of Ferry and Metcalf there. So just wanted to bring that to light. The other thing is I had several people talk to me about House Bill, I believe it was thirteen thirty-seven with the ADUs. Very much, the people that came to me were very much opposed of pushing that through in regards to the fact that they just felt like it was going to change completely the vision and the culture of what the city of Cedar Woolley is and has been, leaving single-family units, the neighborhoods and houses that they bought within, and basically turning it into what some would consider multifamily homes and, and areas, with the possibility of three families on one parcel, as opposed to one. How people choose to use their property, obviously, is their personal property, and they can do that. I did talk to an individual that lived in Seattle, and they've been seeing some of this kind of flow in their direction, as that stuff had been implicated. And one individual told me that in her neighborhood, she can look across the street, and there is now multi-level, multiple-family homes in the neighbor's backyard. And it leaves parking issues, it leaves congestion for other things. You've got additional heads going to the school districts that are overflowing. It's just the, the overflow of the things that happen, regardless of what the actual intention or purpose of the bill was. The knee-jerk reactions and the reality of the situations that are coming out of it are not conducive with being healthy for the city as a whole, or at least her speaking on behalf of her neighborhood and what she sees in front of her. So I just stated that I would share that, along with the individuals that specifically came to me, knowing that we had had that discussion about how that could affect us and, and whether or not that was going to be pushed forward before it needed to be. So the initial response I've received from several constituents is that they do not agree or wish to see that move forward. And I'm just passing that along.
Thank you. Councilman Henderson?
Thank you. I, I've also been a part of several discussions about the House Bill thirteen thirty-seven, and I, I don't really need to elaborate. Councilwoman Diamond kind of got all the, all the main points across. This weekend, I, and Mr. Lloyd didn't want to report on this, but I'm going to report on it for him, is us, along with Chief McElrath, went to the NF, NCFCA, I had to write it down, debate finals, and got to judge for that. I don't, I don't know about, I don't know about you, Chief, but that was way better organized and way more well-attended than I could have possibly imagined. It was, it was incredible, so. And actually being able to sit there and watch the debate and judge, and have people change your mind about certain things, and then the other guy changes your mind back, it's kind of interesting. So it is, I believe, a yearly thing. So when they, when they come back through, there were quite a few very tired parents that had been there for three days that got roped into judging the finals, you know? And it, and they were very appreciative of us being there. They were very excited that some people from the local community were able to be there. I would highly recommend, if you guys get the invite next year, it, it is definitely a treat. So that's all I have for tonight.
And thank you for participating in that. Councilman Cock?
Yes, if looking through the check register, I do appreciate, I know there's a lot of complexities with how the city buys goods and services, but I do appreciate that there looks like a pretty strong effort to buy and, and get services and goods locally. And I commend that, because when we support our local businesses, we are not only supporting economic development, we're also supporting jobs. So I know we can't, you know, I'm not talking about any particular one, but I think generally it's a great idea. So I, I think it's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Burns?
Up until this year, Skagit Transit Board had a city council member from Burlington and Mount Vernon, is that right? And it never alternated, but they decided to start alternating that, and Mayor Johnson had appointed me to that position. So I had my first meeting last week. I appreciated her faith in me on that. And the main thing I'd say I'm going to try to get out of it is improving what we can with the transportation in Cedar Woolley. Obviously, we're not going to match what the, the state government's expecting. We're going to be able to just come up with, to do these laws they're, they're proposing, but we can at least try to make it better for the people who need to rely on that transportation to get around. Tonight, we had a strategic planning committee meeting, and we covered the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six city council goal. Just did a refresher on that. We talked about the introduction of Invisio, which will help the city track various metrics. It'll help the police department, fire department, give us metrics on what's going on, as well as help track our strategic goals. We also looked at the goal-setting schedule for the future, and I'm sure Charlie will get that to you as time goes on. So, yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Lavaca?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First off, I was able to, a buddy invited me to the play at the high school, Young Sherlock, and that was really awesome. They did an amazing job. Great actors over there. They were surprised we didn't have anybody that went to the school, but still, yeah, you can go to the school play and enjoy it, right? Better than a lot of plays I've seen, and I liked seeing plays, for sure. Another thing that's been coming up is the best station. I've heard a lot of comments on that, emails, text messages, and just people that are upset about the fact that it's still moving forward. I know it's challenging. One person pointed out, there's been four best fires, station fires, within the last four years, and, and they can be very catastrophic fires, you know? There is a plan to put these all throughout the state. So I know that we really want to protect Cedar Woolley, and I do appreciate that, but I think they're pushing for one over in Mount Vernon right now. There is, the only way to accommodate what the state has mandated for the electric company is to have these everywhere, spotted throughout Washington State. So I would only implore anybody, which I verbally zipped said, and I've, I've, I can't emphasize enough, you have to speak up back to the state, you know? A, a local council can only do so much. The Climate Act was voted in. It's what the majority of people wanted, and that's what is happening. That's the direct result, is you will have lithium battery bombs all throughout the state. And so, you know, hopefully people don't just fight for our community, which is great, but they actually fight for Washington as well.
Thank you. Thank you for those words. So just a couple of things. I want to give a shout-out to, and a man, many thanks to Senator Wagner. He gave us a call tonight. He had met with the Chair of the Transportation Board, and really wanted to know if Cedar Woolley had any transportation needs. Thank you, Bill, for getting on the phone with me and making that conversation happen. I greatly appreciate our legislatures. They do care about all communities within this, within their jurisdiction, and certainly we are feeling their support. At the SCOG meeting this past week, we had a presentation by WASDOT. They were talking about the upcoming Cook Road projects on the, on and off-ramp. I have asked Devin Willard of WASDOT to come give a presentation. He'll do that at the end of the month. I think it'd be really helpful for not only all of us to hear about it, but also, given the fact that we all travel and our constituents travel up and down that road all the time, I thought the information would be helpful, that you could actually share that with your constituents, if they're not aware of it. So, to provide information for you. And I just want to emphasize again that next, the next meeting is going to be the joint meeting between City Council and the Planning Commission. I'm looking forward to that. And we'll see where that goes. I always like those meetings. Moving on now to public comment. I am going to open up to public comment here within the chamber. Is there anybody who would like to give public comment? If you do, please give your name, how you're affiliated with Cedar Woolley, and try to keep it to three minutes. Is there anyone who would like to do that? Okay, seeing none, I will turn to online. Is there anybody online who would like to give public comment? So raise your hand, and Charlie, and Woody can unmute you. Okay. Seeing no one, I will close public comment. It is six forty-four. We'll move on to finished biz, or new business, unfinished business. There is none this week. The first item on the agenda is the professional service agreement. This is Facet Northwest Inc., SR twenty Cascade Trail West. It's extension Phase Two. And Mr. Bullock, I believe this is you.
Thank you, Mayor. So, getting past my consent agenda items. So we, as you know, David Lee retired in August, and he was part of designing this portion of the Cascade Trail in-house. And when he retired, he was only at about a sixty percent design level. And so as part of that, we've, I was able to get additional money from SCOG to pay for hiring a consultant to finish the design and get it ready, going to potentially bid, hopefully this, later this summer, as, as a late summer project. And so when Eric Johnson was here, we ran through a selection process through a variety of consultants, and Facet Northwest is also the consultant, correct me if I'm right, Tom, the primary consultant we have developing our comprehensive plan at this time as well. They happen to have an engineering office that designs civil engineering projects out of Mount Vernon, so they're also a local, a relatively local firm. And they were the preferred candidate to finish the design on the Cascade Trail. Any questions?
Bill, could you remind me again where Phase Two goes, from where to where?
Oh, let me see here. I always get the, so Phase Two goes from Hodgkin Street? Is that right? Oh, I'm sorry, I get my road names mixed up in that area. But basically, ultimately, Phase Two A and Phase Two B will go all the way, will extend the Cascade Trail to the hospital. So this is the first phase of that.
Hodgins, it'll be starting at Hodgins.
Thank you.
Well, is that on the south side of the highway?
No, it's on the north side of the highway.
Okay.
So as this trail continues and approaches the hospital, it becomes an elevated trail to serve as a flood dike as well as a trail.
Oh, I see.
And then we'll dovetail in with the roundabout, the state's building at Cook Road and Collins.
Isn't it Highway twenty and Collins, not Cook Road?
Sorry, you're right. Highway twenty and Collins.
Yeah. Councilman Henderson?
I've had Cook Road on my mind all day long.
Yeah, I know. We talked a lot about, yeah.
So, who's, so is the county going to be handling the section between the end of our, the end of our city limits for the Cascade Trail for us? And then it's going to go down to Col, is this going to end up hooking up with the...
Eventually, it will hook in with Burlington. But it's going to go from our city into the county, then into Burlington, so...
And there'll be a crosswalk somewhere or something?
Right, and so, yeah, associated with that roundabout, on the, on the north side of the roundabout crossing Collins, there will be a crosswalk there. And there'll probably be, also be a crosswalk across Highway twenty. I believe there's like a bike path... I believe there's like a bike path that goes under the rail line in the vicinity of Collins or something like that.
So, it does, I wasn't aware that the county had any plans to go from Collins up to District Line Road?
I don't necessarily know of it as far beyond a conceptual plan. It's not part of their six-year transportation plan at this point in time. But sometimes you got to, you know, build, and they will come. So, when we get it to our city limits, then it will be up to the county and/or the state, be either one, to then continue that connection. Because there is an overall plan to have a continuous connection all the way through Burlington. But we have the current most active piece to build. And then, at that point, it will be, have to be continued by others, because we really don't do a lot of projects outside of our city limits.
Yeah, that District Line, you know?
But that will create the need.
So, are you looking for a motion tonight?
Yes, please. I'd like a motion to execute a contract with Facet Northwest so that we can complete the design of the Cascade Trail Two A.
I think this is definitely a wonderful thing. I'd love to see the trail connect. I'd love to see us somehow get that railroad connected over there by Online. That would be, that would be really cool. I am kind of surprised by the cost of, it does get pretty high, like, you know, Line Nine permitting, and for permitting, it's up to $21,000, and it's also permitting support, bid support on Number Eight. I mean, we're looking at almost $8,000 to go to a pre-bidding meeting, respond to the questions, prepare a bid, that kind of stuff. So, it's always amazing to me to see how much things cost in government to do. It is a pretty, I don't know if anybody else noticed that, it seemed like a pretty large amount just to prepare a design to bid before we even get the ability to really go into the big design and then to build process and all this stuff.
Part of this is that there is a bridge for, a bridge crossing on Brickyard Creek for this section of trail. And that adds a fair amount of complexity to what otherwise would be a pretty straightforward trail design.
Yeah. I called up the county about the, it was, forgetting, not Cabin Creek Road, but Mill Creek Trail along the Cascade Trail going up to Hamilton, and it was flooded over. And I guess they had it under engineering review for two years, and it was going to be over a million point two dollars to put a boardwalk over that trail. And I called up the director of Parks and Rec over there, just from our perspective, like, that's a lot, you know? But we want people to be able to communicate or go back and forth. But, yeah, these things, they seem like they get a little bit, they run away from us if we're not careful, and I know that you are, but, yeah, just thought I'd make note of that. I'm in favor of seeing the trail connect, though.
Councilman Henderson?
Yeah. What is, what is our estimated time of completion to where we're actually going to be able to be walking on this?
Our target for, for this phase of the project is to, because we have the majority of the project designed right now. We're just finishing from 60% to bid-ready plans. And so, the goal is to hopefully have this thing on the street for construction in August as a late project for a contractor. And then get it, we need to get the bridge in before the fish window, which is October 1st.
Right.
But, and then the rest of that, this is really maybe 15 working days worth of, worth of work to get this trail in beyond the bridge. So, it should go pretty quickly, should make a good late-season project for a contractor. So, I'm hoping we get good bid prices on it from that standpoint. I'd rather not wait till next spring if I can help it. But, you know, David did a good job designing to the point where he did, and we just need this piece of the football to pick it up and bring it past the finish line. So, that's our intent at this point.
And then, as, as this trail gets put in, is there going to be any phase of this project that we're doing that's going to be extending past what our city limit line is?
Not that the city will be involved in, but it will be something that partially, this will be a regional coordination that will either potentially go with the state and/or the county to, and then potentially what you can do, what could happen too is Burlington could extend to their city limits, so then we have a gap. And then, gaps are typically earn more points when you fund them, because you want to close gaps.
Right.
So, this is something that I coordinate regionally with the county and some of these things on, and I will be certainly using part of my effort through the Skagit Council of Governments and whatnot to see if I can help make this a priority for them as well. But right now, I know that the county's real focused on Josh Wilson Road. And, but, yeah, that's kind of where I'm at with that. I don't have a lot of control beyond, beyond doing a regional coordination level, but that's what's going to have to, have to happen to carry on. But if we're not there, there's not necessarily reason for them to all of a sudden do something in the middle of nowhere either. So, that's my hope.
The reason, the reason that I ask is, years ago, I can't remember her name, but our city administrator for the city of Burlington decided they wanted to put in a bunch of trees along the, along the Highway 20 trail. And so, now, 12 years later, we're, the city is stuck maintaining all of that, all of the mowing for that entire trail, all the way up to District Line Road, almost two miles outside of city limits. We had to buy a $57,000 mower just to be able to get it done in time. So, I just wanted to make sure that if we were to be doing something of that magnitude and adding to any maintenance that our Public Works crew would have to do, that we'd be forecasting downstream manpower requirements and equipment requirements to go along with the added, because we're building a park up on the, on the hill. We're doing a couple of other things, so keeping that in mind for, you know, maybe next year or the year after, forecasting for equipment and manpower for Public Works.
With my understanding, with the, one of the major goals of this trail is basically provide multi-modal access to the hospital, which is right at the end of our city limits. And then, to basically, if it continues into Burlington, which I know from a regional perspective is a desire, that then we set things up so we can hand that football off to the next segment. But that's one of the primary service areas, too, is to add that multimodal connection to the hospital itself and all those businesses in and around the hospital.
So, Councilman Burns?
Sorry, just a follow-up off of what he said, just keep it really brief. Is there landscaping involved in this project or are you just putting in a trail?
It's mostly roadside restoration as opposed to landscaping, which I think of as things like street trees and hedges and things like that.
Keeping it simple.
Yeah, basically. We're just trying to get the trail in.
Refresh my memory. Have we already acquired all the property necessary for the entire trailer? I know we've touched on this repeatedly over the years.
We do have two piece, well, one piece of property to acquire, and then the other right-of-way piece that's still out there is we have a sewer easement that this trail runs along, but that sewer easement did not provide for other uses, such as use as a public trail. And so, our right-of-way agent is actively, because we hired, the city hired the right-of-way agent, it's not working for a consultant. And so, we have some, that gives us some control over what their workload is. So, I know right now they're working on, and with a federal project, it's surprising how much work it takes to modify an existing easement. But they are doing that. We should have that successfully done here in the next month or so. And then, at that time, we should have the right-of-way certified and ready to go for the trail before.
Great.
Before, say, like, the June timeframe at the very latest.
Madam Mayor, if I may ask a follow-up, Bill, for something you had said. Getting far enough, and it's going to bring us right to the hospital, so I think at that point, it's still a win, even though I've walked to Burlington. I think it's awesome. It would be great to walk that whole way. You said that if the money's there, I'm just curious, in light of our current deficit as a state, are we looking at seeing probably some decreasing in grants and all that? I know some significant budget cuts are coming. If this, that we get the design all done and we don't got enough to actually complete the entire project, this can sit on a back burner for a year, two years, three years. It's settled.
This project is fully funded through TIB and SCOG money.
Okay.
Through construction. We have all the money to build it this year. The Phase Two A.
That's why the motion to sign the contract?
Right. And then Phase Two B will be part of my office's grant, application, competitive grant for tap monies this March or April. I can't quite remember which.
Thanks.
So, with that said, is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make the motion.
A second.
Okay, thank you. So, we have a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilman Henderson, to approve the authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Facet Northwest Inc. for engineering, design, and right way of services for Highway 20 Cascade Trail West Extension Phase Two A project in the amount not to exceed $186,128. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to item number two, which is the Seidra Wully Municipal Code 2.16.060, Judges Pro Tem Court Commissioners. This is ordinance 2084-25. This is also a first read. And Nikki, I believe you are handling this?
Yes, Mayor. So, this is ordinance 2084-25, which is essentially correcting a provision of the Seidra Wully Municipal Code that is not consistent with the RCWs. Our municipal court is governed by RCW 3.50, and in 3.50090, it talks about how judges pro tem are appointed. Judges pro tem are appointed by the presiding judge. However, our code calls for the mayor to appoint the judges pro tem, and because that is not consistent, we have drafted an ordinance to go ahead and change the code to language that is consistent with state law. We've changed the language to reflect that judges pro tem are appointed by the presiding judge. It also talks about how the judges pro tem are paid, either as an hourly rate consistent with the municipal court judge or by a separate ordinance and resolution, or resolution of the council. We did also add in language that is consistent with state law about taking the oath of office and having the appointment be in writing. We removed the provision about court commissioners, because court commissioners are not temporary positions. They are positions that are subordinate to the presiding judge, but it is a separate position which hears calendars in the same way that the judge does, and the city of Seidra Wully does not have a need for a court commissioner and does not have one budgeted. So, it's just an unnecessary provision. But that's the overview of what we were doing here, and if you have any questions, I will take them. If you don't, I would certainly appreciate a motion today, because, like I said, it is not consistent with the RCWs. And I did attach a copy of the RCW in question to the agenda bill.
Okay. Any questions?
I do have a question on that one, if I may, Madam Mayor. So, we're certain that this, the RCW is, is firm in its stance, because normally, when I read RCWs or I read the WAC code or anything like that, I see words like "shall," right? And "shall" means you, you need to do this. "May" means you have the option, I think that came up earlier. You can interpret it as, yeah, we, we need to do this, but the legal definition would be "shall" if we had to do it. So, this right here says the municipal court judge may designate one or more persons or judges pro tem to serve in the absence. So, with that being said, we are certain that this, this is the, the law, basically. You're, how are you interpreting "may" as "shall," I guess?
So, the RCWs that talk about appointment of judges, it talks about how the mayor appoints the presiding judge with confirmation by the council. There is nothing in RCW 3.50 that talks about the mayor being able to appoint judges pro tem. Judges pro tem are the fill-ins for the presiding judges, and the only place in 3.50 that talks about judges pro tem talks about the appointment being made by the presiding judge. So, I looked at a ton of other codes as well, and I did not personally find any that had language that allowed the mayor to appoint. I talked it over with various other lawyers who agreed with me. I talked with the prosecutor. I talked with my lawyers internally. There's no justification for the mayor appointing a judge pro tem within the RCWs.
Go ahead, sorry.
Sorry, go ahead.
I was going to say that if, if the RCW 3.50 states that it is the mayor that can't, that appoints the judge, and then a little bit later on, it says the judge may appoint a pro tem, the default would be that if they did not, it would be the mayor who would. So, would it be wiser to make our code the mayor or judge could appoint the judge pro tem? I mean, what if the judge isn't there? What if the judge doesn't want to appoint one or something? This one sounds like, you know, we can lock ourselves in with "shall," but that's not how the RCW is written, and so we could do the mayor or, couldn't we?
I would not recommend, I would not recommend that. I don't think that that is consistent with state law.
Who would do it if the, if the judge did not?
The judge appoints pro tems for periods of time, right? So, any, any situation that arises where the judge needs a pro tem, like he's sick or an affidavit of prejudice has been filed, then he's got a judge pro tem that can fill in for him, that has been appointed for a specified period of time.
Okay. I see what you're saying. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's like what we did, you're not here, then obviously, Ellen would, or Councilman Henderson would fill in for you. And so, in this case, if the judge is going to appoint somebody that's going to best fit his, or that he has the most trust in, and therefore, if he's not available, that person would be next default. And that's a authority that the mayor would provide to the judge or that the RCW provides to that judge that would be sitting. No, that makes sense. Thank you very much for clarifying, Nikki.
Okay. I didn't know. So, Councilman Burns, did you have a comment? No?
No, I was just going to make sure it was clear, because my understanding of it was saying it this way, using the word "may" is essentially saying that, to my understanding, Nikki can correct me, the judge is not required to appoint one or pick one if there's not going to be a need for it. So, that's why they're saying "may" as opposed to a requirement statement.
Right. You're required to have a presiding judge, which is appointed by the mayor and confirmed by council. However, if there is a need for a pro tem, then the judge may appoint that person.
Thank you.
So, do we have a motion? Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Madam Mayor, I'll second that.
Thank you. So, we have a motion by Councilwoman Kestie, seconded by Councilwoman Diamond. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? And I did not read that. The motion that was just approved is a motion to adopt ordinance number 2084-25, amending the Seidra Wully Municipal Code, Section 216060, Judges Pro Tem Courts Commissioner. All right. Thank you, Councilman, and thank you, Nikki. Moving on to the last item of the night under New Business, and that is Professional Service Agreement, Quality Controls Cooperation. And Mr. Bullock, this is you again.
Thank you. So, QCC is how I spell Quality Controls Corporation, is our current primary SCADA system consultant for the wastewater treatment plant, and they've held that status for, I think, the last three or four years. And what we're trying to do is continue on that relationship, especially as we go stepping into a potential sewage treatment plant upgrade as well. And so, this basically gives them a new contract for the next three years with an average of $50,000 a year budget, which is, I think, I believe, the same budget they had last contract they had. And they seem to do a very good job for us, and we're anxious to keep them doing good work for the treatment plant.
Again, are you looking for a motion tonight?
Yes, please.
Okay. Any questions? Councilman Henderson?
So, the price isn't going up?
Correct.
Okay. And our, what additional costs, I'm, sorry, give me just one second, I'm scrolling up. So, during, when we're doing the sewer plant upgrade, would we be working directly with them to update the SCADA system?
So, they will be having quite a bit of input in that. RH2 Engineers is the one currently tasked with our facility plan and then the treatment plant design after the facility plan's been completed. So, certainly, QCC will be a part of that, because they're the ones that maintain our existing our existing SCADA system. But as RH2, as we, uh, design the new components for that treatment plant upgrade, our SCADA system will change. RH2 will be, uh, designing those new SCADA system components in conjunction with QCC. This contract is really a contract of a task order basis, time and materials basis contract, if you will, for maintaining our existing treatment plant. Although, we will likely have a task order at some point for them to provide input to RH2, just simply because they're the experts with our existing SCADA system, and we need them to help integrate what the new SCADA system will look like.
Would that come at a separate cost?
Um, don't know yet.
Or...
I would say, I will answer that by saying it depends on what capacity we have left in, in our, uh, this contract for our normal operations and maintenance, although I will say, um, we continue to have things, um, uh, I don't wanna say fail, but I'm gonna say fail on a treatment plant. Uh, most recently, like with Fisher, since I've been here, we've had three out of our four rotors, um, break on, on our oxidation ditch, for instance. So, and, and the reality is, is, uh, many of the components of our treatment plant are at the end of their design life. Many of them have been operating for 50 years without any meaningful maintenance to them, in particularly the oxidation ditch. And so, with that, we're intending to engage these consultants, QCC, Fisher Construction. Uh, we just had Ford Crane in there to lift out rotor number two. And so, uh, it's, so, yeah, this is gonna be something we step into. I, I don't necessarily, I would, I can see us doing either. If we have capacity within this grant, we will do that coordination within this grant. If we are, uh, running short on the capacity of this grant, then we will likely come to you for another proposal with QCC to add some additional assistance with RH2 to, to, uh, make sure we design those systems in a robust manner.
Okay.
But I won't know that for another couple of years, probably.
Because the re, the reason I ask is because I know it's coming sooner than later, and this is a three-year agreement.
Yes, sir.
So, I just wanted to ask if there'd be any change orders with QCC during that for, um, upgrades to the, to the plant, but that, that would come as a separate package completely.
That's correct. If I can do QCC's coordination with RH2 within this, uh, contract here, I certainly will. If I, if it's gonna, uh, take additional effort, then I'll come back to council with that explanation and justification at that time.
Okay, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I, I just want to tell you, uh, Bill, doing a great job over there, too. You know, it is an older plant, um, and so I do appreciate that. And I know that this, I, I believe I remember correctly, this was in the budget for already doing that, and so the only thing that would be different if, if we do have to increase it at some point. Um, the pieces that are breaking down, um, I know we budgeted those higher and, and for this next couple of years, because we anticipate a higher breakdown rate. Um, are we covering that pretty good?
Yes.
Okay, sweet. And again, thank you, and good job.
Thank you.
All right, there's no more questions? Do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve SWMC 2 dot 16 dot 060, or that's the wrong one, sorry, Professional Services Agreement.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. So, we have a motion by Councilman LaBaca, seconded by Councilman Cock. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Beautiful, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Bullock. All right, um, that concludes our meeting for tonight. Again, um, our next meeting is gonna be a joint meeting between the City Council and also the Planning Commission. That'll be February 5th, um, at 6:00 PM. Okay. Have a good night, we're adjourned.
Time to go to a basketball game, right?
Yeah.
That's right, everyone's gonna show up.
I went to those for 10 years.